All right, good morning, everyone. If you are all ready, and I hope you are, we'll begin our meeting today. We'll start if you will stand with me, and let's say a prayer and pledge of allegiance. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this new day and a time to come together to transact and take care of business on behalf of Titus County, the residents, the taxpayers, the elected officials, and those who have business with the court. We just pray your guidance and direction on each agenda item that we would make the best possible decision and listen to all sides as we consider. We thank you for our visitors that are in attendance today, each representing a very important aspect of our community. We thank you for our wonderful Easter weekend, and just praise you for providing salvation for us as sinners. We turn this meeting now over to you, in Christ's name, evening. Morning, Major. All right, welcome, everybody, to our last meeting of the month of April. Today is the 22nd of April, it's just after 9:00 a.m. We'll begin with item number one, public comments and/or requests for information on non-agenda items in accordance with Section 551-042 Texas Open Meetings Act. We have several guests here today, and let me direct your attention to the last item on the agenda, and that's item number 19. And myself and the commissioners will be meeting at the Department of Public Safety offices today after lunch at 1:00. This was a meeting time that was all agreed upon by folks at DPS, TechDOT, in cooperation with us. And we'll have a meeting to discuss the future of our waystation here in town. Are you asking me a question? You look like you were looking at me for a question. No, you, John. Okay, just making sure. I just want to make sure you -- okay. So along that line, we have a guest here with us, Major Chris Nordlow with DPS. And Major Nordlow is going to come to the mic and any comments that he would like to say. And I wanted him to maybe kind of tell you what we are going to be discussing at 1:00 today, which I think is a real important project for this community and a great opportunity that we've got. And since we won't have public -- somebody may come to this meeting, I don't know, you're certainly welcome to, at 1:00, I thought we would give you an overview of what we're going to discuss at 1:00 today. So, Major, welcome. We're honored to have you here with us today. Welcome to Titus County Commissioners' Court. And tell us, tell the general public, a little bit more about what we've already begun discussions on, and we'll follow up with the second meeting today.
Thank you, sir. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Appreciate your inviting me up here for this meeting, and we look forward to 1:00. I'm Major Chris Nordlow with the Tech Department of Public Safety. I run the Commercial Vehicle Enforcement Program for the state of Texas, and I work for the Chief of the Highway Patrol. We're in the process, it has been over for years now, of revamping our infrastructure when it comes to commercial vehicle enforcement, specifically the facilities that we have, some of which were built 30 years ago, and no longer can sustain the amount of traffic that we have, the increase in traffic. We have 28 million people living in the state of Texas now, and not just a whole lot more road miles that we've added to that. So the infrastructure needs to be improved. So what we've done in the past, and we're currently doing in Guadalupe County, is working in conjunction with Guadalupe County and TechDOT, and revamping the Seguin Inspection Facility. And the way we've done that is that we have added a screening lane, a bypass lane. DPS comes in behind it with the technologies for screening and people. And so we're working hand in hand, the state on the TechDOT side, the state on DPS side, and the county, working hand in hand to improve highway safety in these particular counties. And we recognize that Titus County is one of those opportunities that we can improve. If we can improve the westbound inspection facility, then we can screen basically almost 100 percent of commercial vehicle traffic that's going into the DFW metroplex. So from a homeland security standpoint, from an infrastructure safety standpoint, this is a win-win for everybody involved, including the county and the citizens to the west of here. That's our proposal. What we want to do is work between us, and it takes money to do this. So the county and TechDOT will have to work together to improve the infrastructure, and DPS will come in behind with manpower. What we would like to do is, when we improve this, add in the technologies for Way in Motion, height detectors to combat bridge strikes, to protect the roadways, and also carrier identification, so that we can take those unsafe carriers off the road. Technology is there now, where we can instantly detect what carrier's coming through the inspection facility, and if they have a federalized service order, or if they have no operating authority, then we can pull them over at the same time, and we don't let them pass. This is a great place for us to do it, up on Interstate 30, and our vision is to have this facility operate 40 hours a week.
How many of these kind of new revamped, modernized facilities would there be in the state of Texas?
We currently have advanced facilities in Rivera, Falfarius, Divine, Seguin is the revamped one, New Averly, which is north of Houston, Queen City near here, and Penwell. Those are our main facilities that operate 40 hours a week. And we would like to make Mount Pleasant the next one.
Right. All right. Well, we'll give everyone more details as we progress through this process, but I'm excited that we might have an opportunity to have this modernized facility there at our westbound station. So thank you for coming this morning. You're welcome to sit through as much of this as you would like, and we will all see you at the DPS station at 1:00.
I appreciate the opportunity, and we look forward to protecting your community.
All right. Thank you, Major.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else like to speak to the court at this time on a non-agenda item? All right, moving along, let's consider and possibly approve our minutes from our last meeting on April 8th.
Make a motion.
Motion's made by Commissioner Parker to approve that set of minutes.
That was Dana. I'll second.
That was Commissioner Applewhite made the motion. Commissioner Parker will second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, item number three, reports from our commissioners regarding our roadwork status. And let me remind everybody, I apologize for the fact that I think we had a mic or two that was turned off at our last meeting, but we've got some folks that watch us, and they're making comments to myself and some of you, I understand. So let's really be sure that we go overboard in directing our comments toward these microphones. It's not just for the benefit of the people in this room, but the people that are on our channel that is on YouTube, so make sure that they can hear us. So anyway, I'll begin. Let's go left to right this time. Commissioner Parker, roadwork status, please, sir.
Last couple of weeks, we have been installing some culverts in our, some of our constituents' driveways that have called us about them. They purchased the culverts, and we go put them in for them. We've done that. We spent most of the day last Thursday picking up trees from the trees and the wind that we had had. Little bit of wind we had, it wasn't a whole lot, but we still had, I think it was seven pretty good-sized trees down from Wednesday night, and we are starting work on County Road 4315 today, and pulling ditches and all. We've got some soft spots we've got to clean out, and that's kind of where we're at, right at the present.
Commissioner Applewhite.
Yeah, we had a lot of trees this past week, so we've had been called out, but we've got them all pretty well out of the way, and we've been patching and digging up soft spots, and been pretty well having a lot to do and trying to catch up.
Commissioner Fitch.
Well, we've been doing enough chainsaw running in our precinct, trimming, cutting trees, removing some trees that have started to lean with the wind, and we've been patching and getting roads ready for some seal coating this summer. And we put in a few culverts for some private driveways that, you know, right at our, in our right-of-way. And a little bit of maintenance going on, staying pretty busy.
We've been fixing, preparing roads for coal mix, and we've put some intersections with the coal mix on it to smoothen them out in the roads, then patching and just fixing potholes, for the most part.
All right, anything else? All right, let's move on to item number four. Ever so often, about once a year, we have the privilege of welcoming some members of our CASA team, led by Michelle Coburn, their executive director. And so our court-appointed special advocates team is here with us this morning. And you see us wearing some blue ribbons, and Ms. Coburn will explain the significance of that. But CASA plays a very, very important role in this community that many of us will never have anything to do, unfortunately, in that part of life. And it's not a pretty part of life, but it's a part of life where kids need help. And they legally have the right to, oftentimes, an attorney in the absence of a group like CASA that represents them in these scary court settings. But because of Michelle and ladies that serve and men that serve with CASA, we have the opportunity to play a different role in the lives of these kids. These are volunteers, and they're volunteers because they care and they want to help these kids. And they create a much more friendly partner for these young children than an attorney, oftentimes. And not only does it save the county an enormous amount of money, but it provides a much, much better level of service, very particular, very tender service to these young kids. So Michelle, welcome this morning. We thank you for what you do. Tell us a little bit more about what's going on with CASA and why April is important.
Well, first, I just want to remind everyone why we're wearing a blue ribbon. Back in 1989 in Virginia, there was a grandmother that actually had reported several times to Child Protective Services that her grandchild was in danger. It wasn't until she found her grandson buried in a box that unfortunately devastated her and her family. It was her son and daughter-in-law that committed the crime, and that act of that one grandmother tying a blue ribbon on her van antenna back in 1989 is where we are today. So it does take little action, just one, the power of one person can make a difference. So just remember, the blue ribbon stands for all of our precious children that don't get a voice. If you have the opportunity to see the blue pinwheels out front, there are 206 of those, you will need to add five pinwheels to that in order to count the number of children that have died at the hands of abuse and neglect this year. There were 211 in the state of Texas. That's despicable. I do want to tell you that I am spending more time in Austin than ever before. You may or may not have seen the article about our service dog, Enya, that actually got to meet with Senator, our United States Senator, John Cornyn, at the Southern University of Law in Houston. There were five dogs that were invited to come and meet with Senator Cornyn in reference to making a difference for these children that have to testify against their perpetrators, particularly sex crimes is what we're focused on. And Senator Cornyn is starting the legislation and trying to get it passed so that we would have more dogs available, like Enya, that would be able to sit in the witness stand unseen to the jury, so that this child could feel supported and safe while they testify against the person that perpetrated them. So we're using them for sex traffic victims, as well as all sex crimes, whether it is aggravated assault, sexual assault, or molestation. So we hope that we will be able to go to Washington. They said once we get things moving that they would like to invite us back. And Enya did a great job. She was one of the few that knew 41 commands there, and of course, she handled herself very well. And let me remind you, Enya was actually given to our program. She's a $45,000 dog. She was given to our program in order to be able to work with these children. If ever you're in CPS court, you will see Enya there, and it changes the environment of the courtroom for these children. As you can imagine, when their parents are testifying and attorneys are asking them very hard questions, and so are the judges, it's very difficult for a child to sit there and listen to their parents, that they're testing positive for drugs, or that they've beat the child, or whatever the incident occurred. We actually let the children take Enya for a walk sometimes if the judge needs them to leave the room, which we do quite often. And if the child chooses to stay, it's a teenager or a child of age that wants to stay, it definitely helps support this child during their testimony or having to listen to the testimony. So we are working on a lot of legislation to get things changed for our children in foster care. And so I'll be heading back to Austin most of May to work on some of that, and I'm on a lot of committees in Austin to change some of the things that we're doing for our children in foster care. We'd like to say that foster care is in tip-top shape and able to take care of our children. That is not true. The state was never intended to be a parent. It was intended to be a temporary placement to keep children safe, and that is no longer the case, unfortunately. I'd like to share with you a few numbers about the state of Texas, and then I'll go to our local numbers. In the state of Texas, last year, there was 63,657 children. 63,657. That was in 2017, so that was actually the year before last. In 2018, it rose. I wish it didn't, but it's 66,352 children in the state of Texas. And please know that nearly 42 percent of those children, victims of abuse and neglect, were under the age of three. These children can't defend themselves, they can't speak for themselves, they can't tell anyone what's wrong. We have to be very observant. A lot of times, we hear that the younger children can have an attorney to look out for them for their legal and their best interest. Those are the most difficult cases, because children can tell us what's going on when they can speak, but we've got to look at these children when they're babies. We've got to make sure there's no bumps or bruises. We've got to make sure that no additional injuries are occurring. And I hate to report, but as of recently, we did have some relatives that we placed the children with and passed all the backgrounds and did all those things, and then we got a horrible, horrible call of physical abuse on this child that's already been removed once from their parents, then placed with a relative, a fictive kin relative, which means like family, but not family, and then this child had to endure horrible abuse again. So it's unfortunate, but it is not 100 percent fail-proof system, and that's why the eyes and ears are so important for us to keep on our children. In the state, there was actually, the number of children removed from their biological families increased almost 10 percent, 9.7 percent to be exact. That's a lot of children. That's a lot of children. And the increases of the number of children that are placed in foster care, almost 1.48 percent of those children are placed in emergency shelters. We've had an increase of 4 percent of emergency shelter placements. Why? Where do you put 66,000 children? That's a lot of children. And they are placed all over the state of Texas. And our team of volunteers, we have 80-plus volunteers now, travel wherever they're placed to make sure that they are safe and they are getting all their needs met while they're in foster care. We do the very best that we can. It's like not fail-proof, like I said, but we've got to make sure that these children are not being revictimized over and over again. It's despicable. I also wanted to let you know that of the 211 confirmed deaths, there was an increase of 22 percent fatalities over the year before, and 36 percent of those victims are infants, and 69 percent were under the age of three. So 69 percent of these children. I would like to say in Region 4, which is the region we're in, that we have not had many child deaths. That is not true. We have had several child deaths, actually, in our region, six to be exact, and it's, of course, I can't tell you exactly where, but it's closer to home than you think. So when parents don't know how to parent and they get frustrated or tired, they might shake the baby, they might hit the baby, they might do unspeakable things to the child just to be comfortable. And so that's why we have to make sure we step in and do what's best that we can. We really are trying a more holistic approach, Your Honor, to work with the families as well as the children. It's not our job to work with these parents, it's our job to work with the children. But if we don't try to teach some of them to be parents and how to do it properly, what are we going to do with 66,000 children? That's just too many, way too many. Right here in our counties, Titus Camp and Morris, we had 206 victims, 206. 41 percent of those children are right here in Titus County. I wish our numbers were going down, they're not, and I wish that more people would put a stop to this. I know our police work very hard. I know our CPS caseworkers work very hard. Some, I believe, should not be CPS caseworkers because they're too young, they don't understand, and they don't have children of their own. However, they do the very best they can. But when you have a 22-year-old that's up against a man that's had nine felony convictions, she really doesn't stand much of a chance. So we need more volunteers, we need more people to stand up for these children, and we need more people to continue to bring awareness to what's going on with our children. This is 100 percent preventable. You hear this from me every year. If our president hired that 66,000 people in one state had a disease that was contagious and people were dying, especially babies, we would declare a state of emergency. We are in a state of emergency. I believe that with everything in me, and I believe that with the Lord's help that we can make a change, and I do think that we're changing. I'm going to close with one picture that I'd like to share with the commissioners. It is of a beautiful family that's from Titus County. There are five gorgeous children, all from the same parents, and we found a relative that didn't have children of her own. She's a young lady, and she has taken all of them, all of them, under the age of five to raise. Now that takes a lot, and I was just telling Kio, so we've got to support her, we have to help her, because otherwise, these children are going to age out of foster care until they're 18 years old, because they're not likely candidates. They're born with disabilities, they're born low-functioning, or they have major issues. They're in special education classes because of the drugs that were in their system when their parents had them. I would like to say that the parents are no longer here, but they are. They are. And I know Chief Isbell and Sheriff Ingram deal with them often, and our prayer is that someday, maybe they'll go to a special island somewhere and disappear and not have any more children, would be a wonderful thing. But anyway, I just want to share with you that there are success stories that comes out of your county. I know you don't hear them in April, but there are some. And these beautiful children, this picture was taken just yesterday for Easter, and they are being adopted by this relative, and it's pretty awesome to be able to see that they are going to have a forever family soon and that they don't have to live in foster care again.
You said that foster family is also related?
She is a cousin of the mother.
She took on five.
All five. And they're beautiful children, and they have severe disabilities, none of them. It's hard enough to raise a child, but to have a child with disabilities is even harder. Thank goodness for family. Do you have any questions for me?
Yeah, are we getting a lot of these people from the southern border, all the people that are camped out down and getting other people's kids to come across? You hear stories. Are a lot of our kids coming from that environment?
Not in our counties, no, sir. Our Laredo program is swamped, and so is our El Paso program, and they're working very diligently with the consulate to try, and we now have a memorandum of understanding with the consulate, CASA does, to be able to work in order to get these children back where they need to be. These children are doing what their parents ask them to do. They don't get a vote. So, no, sir, we're not. Majority of the families that we have in our three counties are Caucasian families, and a lot of our cases are drugs. We are seeing a different level of physical abuse, and it is not just a spanking anymore, and it's getting worse. And then the child death cases are very disturbing, because, you know, until the investigation's complete, you don't know if it truly is a parent or not. And then once you find out that it is, you know, you may have let them visit four or five times with the other child that they've had, or, you know, who knows? So we really have to be very careful and diligent. I have to tell you, I can't say enough, what our teachers do in the schools, they see a lot of things that they report to us and call us for help. And our police department, Sheriff's Department and Police Department do a tremendous job of trying to make sure that they handle this as best they can, because whenever they pull someone over, even our DPS, and they find children in the car, you have to try to do the best you can to take care of those children. That is a very frightening experience, when you see police arresting your parents, that's all you know. We got one baby not long ago that was filthy in a diaper that was soiled, no food, not in a car seat, just sitting in the backseat of the car, and the parents were arrested for drugs. So it's not something we're seeing here, sir, but we are seeing it in Laredo and El Paso area. So, any other questions?
Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, ladies, for coming today and giving us a reminder.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for wearing your blue ribbons, I appreciate it. May we be excused, Your Honor?
You may. Come again, anytime.
Okay. Thank you.
And again, those pinwheels are on the south entrance, they're facing the annex. You all have a nice day.
Thank you, Mr. Chief.
Thank you.
All right, item number five, it's time to consider and possibly approve the renewal of our animal contract, or animal control, or animal care. I'm not sure exactly what the best term is, but this is the services that the city of Mount Pleasant provides to us, and soon we'll be upgrading to a nice new facility, and will be continuing to provide us with service. There are some changes to this contract that Chief Isbell will discuss with us, but this is a, this is the copy that I sent to you by email a couple of weeks ago, and this is for how many years? Is this three years?
No, it's a year-to-year contract.
Year-to-year?
It's always been year-to-year. Usually there's a, well, there is an automatic renewal, there's always been an automatic renewal.
Okay.
Unless changes are made, then I have to notify the court.
Okay, all right. And so it's been a while, it's been several years since we've done this, but it's time to go over, for one, a fee increase, and then some, a couple of changes there, two, services provided. All right, well, welcome, Chief.
Well, I'm just thrilled to be here, because I just made 25 cents.
No, that's how we test the integrity of our guests.
Commissioners and Judge, this is the, like I said a second ago, there's an automatic renewal in the clause. It's been several years since we have made a change. The changes for this contract are necessary, there's several reasons, and I'll go through it. Under section one, number four, delivery of animals to the shelter, we're making a change so that animals are delivered when the shelter is open. Currently, right now, we have been taking animals in the middle of the night. What happens is, if a deputy picks up an animal, they would bring it to the shelter. I had to take somebody off the street and unlock the shelter. There is no vetting of the animal. There is no vetting of the animal. We've had numerous cases, and I'm not making, saying that deputies have done this, but we have had numerous cases where animals have come into the shelter, disease-ridden, they exposed the other animals, and then were left with a kill issue, because I have to terminate a lot of animals now because distemper was brought in, or the animal has shown up, and it's so flea-ridden that all the animals have been exposed to fleas. Now we have another issue where employees are being affected. So we are gonna make a change to where a shelter employee can vet the animal as it comes in to make the determination if it needs to be bathed immediately, or if the animal is sick, provide what proper medications are needed, or to isolate the animal to prevent dis, or to control disease issues. The new shelter is designed so that we can vet these issues very easily. The current shelter is not. This contract takes effect October 1. So our goal is to do a better job of bedding the animals and making sure we don't have to have a higher kill rate than that's not necessary, based on how we, how we take the animals in. Now, what I am gonna do is, we have some temporary holding cages currently at the old shelter, and we use these as outdoor pins. If the sheriff's office or somebody else needs a temporary holding pin, we can provide that free of charge. That way, there's no cost to the county on having to go out and buy a kennel system to hold an animal for a couple hours before the shelter opens. But if the sheriff's office, you know, if somebody wants one of these kennels, then we can provide it for them. Pittsburgh's asking for one. We're gonna put one in their back of their police department. Gilmer's also asking for one, so we're gonna put one back there. So if the county wants one, real simple, we can put one out, out in the back of the sheriff's office, and they can hold, hold an animal temporarily until the employee gets in place to receive the animal. Another change in the contract. Section One, Number Six. We'll continue to take dangerous dogs from the county, but one of the problems that we've had is fees, collecting those fees from individuals. And usually what happens is, if, if a dog is deemed dangerous and we collected it, or a dog has bitten somebody, and we're holding the animal until it's deemed dangerous, the home, or the owner of the animal just refuses to pay, and we've been stuck with the bill. So the, the contract indicates that the county will be billed the fees, and the county would be responsible to collect the money from the individuals that y'all have taken an animal from.
How often does that happen, just out of curiosity?
It's rare. It happens once, once or twice a year, when, when we are not able to get any money out of the individuals. They just refuse to pay and want us to put the dog out. In Section Three, Number One, currently, the rate of county spending is $3,399.66. That rate is going up $200 to $3,600. The number of county animals that are coming into the facility count for 32% of all animals Just a side note, the shelter budget that the city covers is $282,949. That covers three animal control officers and one receptionist. There's a soft cost, that's not included in that either. There's about another $40,000 a year for management of the facility. So you have a lieutenant that is over part-time management of the facility, and the other half is our dispatch center. Then the other soft cost is all the, all the time that I'm involved at the facility that's not included in that budget either, because my salary comes out of the police budget.
So that's a, we go now to $3,600 a month, $43,200 per year. That's a $2,400 increase.
Yes.
Prior year.
Then in Section Four, Two, the city's adding a separate one-time fee of $5,000 to cover the cost of equipment needs per contract year. That $5,000 will cover, and it's just, it's, it's every entity to cover kenneling needs, supplies, equipment. You know, the city loses money on this animal shelter every single day. The, the fees that we charge community members for the adoption is strictly what we pay at the contract rate for our veterinarians. So the city makes no money. We actually also donate $10 to every animal that's adopted out of the facility with a microchip. So, you know, it's, it's a losing proposition, no matter what, for the city. And so we're trying to stop the bleed as much as we can, and there's equipment needs, equipment's break, you know, urine is very acidic, things tear up, and there's computer work, there's just lighting in the facility. So we're trying to reduce how much we're bleeding. So that $5,000 will go into a separate bu, a maintenance budget of the facility, and be used for, you know, when we have to rebuy kennels, kennel doors, when things get tore up at the facility.
Is that, Young, is that annual? Is this kind of a, hopefully, one-time?
Yes, it's an annual, yes, sir.
So that's over and above the $43,200?
Yes.
And that's a new fee?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Those are the only contract changes. And there is still the annual renewal of the contract in there as well. So hopefully, I'm not back here next year.
When does your new facility open?
We're hoping within 45 days. We've had some delays because of the rain. The rain has killed us. Keeping the moisture out of the building has been difficult. And once we finally got the gas turned on at the facility, we were able to turn on the heaters in the building and dry it out. The concrete takes 20 times longer to dry out. When they do the moisture test, we've been hitting 90% still in the concrete. I think we're at 88% today. And they had to come in and bore down into the concrete to, to evaluate the moisture level. We have the floors going in right now, and we've had to do some rework on the floors simply because of the moisture level increases the price. And to get the floors laid in so they're under warranty, so we've had to make some changes for that. We're hoping those will be done, finished out this week, and then we'll have the kennel contractor come back in, install the rest of the kennels. Then the rest of that is IT, getting the phones turned on, the fire alarm, then getting, once everything's done, then we have to have the, the building inspected for ADA compliance. And then the state will come in and inspect the building for animal, animal services. Once we have those two certificates in place, then we'll open up for business. But before that, we'll have a, a grand opening for everybody to come and tour the facility and see how great it will be. This facility looks impressive on the inside. We have made a lot of changes. The ultimate goal is to get more animals adopted, to have to euthanize less, and protect the animals when they come in. We're gonna be able to do that in this facility. Disease control is no longer gonna be a major issue for us, based on the new policies, procedures, and the building design. The airflow filtration system constantly pulls out the air, brings in fresh air. So, you know, we have to have big systems for that, and they're zoned separately to keep the animals safe. And touching the animal will stop as well. Too bold on that. We've reduced the chance of a bite, and we've reduced disease spreading from animal to animal, somebody just coming in, touching a nose, touching a nose. But people will look through a glass to see the animal if they want to visit with the animal. We'll have two separate rooms, they're bonding rooms, that they'll be able to bond with the animal, to visit with the animal, to make sure that's the animal they want to take home with them. And the facility is not a Tosh Mahaw, but it is pet store quality. People will want to come and hang out at this facility. And that's what we want. We want kids to come, we want families to come. And the facility was designed with volunteers in mind. So we have space for volunteers. And currently, right now, I get two to three people a week wanting to volunteer at our facility, and they can't. There is no room for them. And once they get in there, and they look how pitiful the conditions are, they don't want to be there. At this facility, people are gonna want to be at. And we're, I mean, I'm just excited as can be. I'm there daily, working with our architect, our contractors, and making sure this, this facility is, is put in right. And I'm just, I'm, I'm ready. I am so ready. It's gonna be great for this, for this whole region.
Yep, yep. It's a good-looking building. All right, well, I'll get your, get your floors dried out. Did you end up having to chip away the top of the surface?
Yeah, they, they had to come back in and, and basically shoot the surface of the floor with BBs. It's a machine that comes in and, and chips away at the floor where the resin goes in. And the resin keeps the, so the concrete doesn't absorb urine, if people matter.
All right. Thank you for providing us with this service. October 1 is when it goes into effect.
Yep.
Could I say something?
Sure.
I live out in the county. All of the commissioners live in the county. The biggest complaint that I get from my constituents and myself, I live at an intersection of a road that goes from Harps Bluff to Green Hill Road. And in your contract, or in your letter, you said 32% of the dog company, 100% of those dogs out in the county come from the city. People come out there and dump them. And they dump them right at my intersection, and I've taken for years. I pick up dogs, and I bring them down, and I put them in the cage. Now the cage is gone. My wife got a cat out of the dumpster, and they charged her $16 because she brought it down.
The cages are gone simply because of animal cruelty. We have people dropping off the animals, and on a Saturday, we come back on Monday, and we've got animals that are suffering. And then they would put two or three animals in a cage, and I'd come in, the dead animals because they fought. Or they'd drop them off in the wintertime, and the animal was frozen to death. So that's why we got rid of the cages. It's cruel and inhumane to put them in there. When you talk about animals being dumped in the county, we get animals dumped in the city. We're constantly picking them up. County doesn't have employees driving around animal control officers collecting animals. When you talk about city people coming into the county, dropping them off, so challenge you on that, prove it. Because it goes both directions. And Commissioner, it is, is vital that people know that it is a class B misdemeanor to abandon an animal. It is a law violation. We actually have people, we have cameras up, that dump them off right at the animal center, in the middle of the night. And we prosecute those people. We go after them. If we get the license plate, we can determine who they are. Many of them are not even from Titus County. So we constantly have animals abandoned everywhere. And it's just not our community. It is a nationwide issue, nationwide. People in the county, there are no ordinances to require spay and neuter. In my neighborhood, and I live in Eastwood Hills, I get dogs running in my yard constantly from my neighbors. Many of those dogs are not spayed or neutered. And there's no fences. So when we don't spay and neuter, we don't have fences, we let our animals run free in the county or in the city, these are the problems that we have. I get complaints because we take cats. Poor little kitties, just, we should be spraying and neutering and letting them go free, and let them run wild. Running the shelter is a challenge every day. I would love the county to have their own shelter and take on my responsibilities and my complaints that come in constantly, because we're killing animals, putting them down, because people in our community aren't responsible. It's not my fault that we get in 3,000 animals a year. It is not my fault that the county doesn't have ordinances to let, to stop animals from running loose. It's not my fault that people don't spay and neuter. But I get blamed for it.
I'm not blaming you. I'm trying to give, the reality is that I used to bring a lot of dogs in and drop them.
You still can.
No, I have to do it during working hours and, and...
Sure.
I can't do them, I'd bring them in.
I've gotta protect the animals, I gotta protect the facility, I gotta protect my employees.
How about a, a cage out, like in the Harps Bluff area forever, that people could drop off animals?
Oh, I don't understand what you're asking. Are you saying just put a cage somewhere so people, like a satellite facility? If you don't have it monitored, we have people from Hawkins County, Morris County, constantly trying to bring us animals, and we don't take them.
We have to.
We'll get them dumped at our place, but anyway.
I, I, I don't have answers for you, unless everybody around us has stricter laws, stricter ordinances, become responsible for, for the pets that they have. You know, I can't tell you how many times I drive by Staples, and there's a litter of animals being given away. It's ridiculous. It is a nightmare of a problem.
Are you familiar with other counties supporting an effort to enforce, have stricter animal laws? You know, out in the county, people enjoy their freedoms.
Sure they do.
Along with those freedoms comes problems, and animals are just one of them. There are other problems that it creates.
Yes, I've not researched what other counties are doing, so, you know, my efforts have been strictly city. You know, there are strict rules and regulations in the city when it comes to the animals. Several of the things that we've changed up since I've taken over the shelter. Let me, let me give you the first example. My first year, we killed 2,400 animals seven years ago. 2,400 animals we had to put down. That's ridiculous. We averaged 400 animals being adopted. You know, now we're averaging between 600 and 800 that we're having to put down. We have great volunteers, we have, we partner dramatically, we send animals all the way up to New York now. And that costs money. It's not free. So we have a lot of people volunteering money, we have a lot of people volunteering their time and efforts for us to partner with different foundations and rescue groups. We have to go, literally, you have to jump through hurdles to make sure these animals are vetted before they can leave the state of Texas. And there's a lot of costs associated with that, to make sure the animals are healthy before they can leave the state of Texas. Sadly, ugly dogs don't make it. Cats have a rough time because there's just so many of them, and a lot of people don't like cats. So we have, we have a lot of challenges. When we talk about the ordinances regulating the animals, state law says that an animal, if it's adopted out of the facility, has to be spayed or neutered. But if I give an animal to a rescue group, the law doesn't apply. So we're, we're challenged with having three veterinarians here, one in Pittsburgh, one in the county, that take our vouchers at an extremely, extremely reduced rate. So the vets lose money because of our shelter to work with us to help get these animals adopted out. We're very fortunate to have our vets, but they don't have to do that. We're very fortunate to have our vets, but they don't have to do that. And they constantly put pressure on me to raise their fees, but they've been kind enough not to. Since, and I'm talking seven years of pressure to raise their fees. But we're very fortunate. We do fundraisers. You know, we built the facility, 1.8 million. People ask, why is it 1.8 million? Well, the, the foundation alone, all the plumbing that went into it, it's more plumbing than concrete. So, you know, it's not an open room like this. Every, every four feet, there's a wall for those kennels. Those kennels are expensive. My employees have office space now versus they used to not. We have equipment that's in this new facility that makes it, this facility is designed so I don't have to hire more employees. So, you know, when, when it comes to collecting animals and what needs to be done in the county versus the city, you know, we could put a committee together and try to see if there's laws that we can create for the county residents and see what kind of backlash we get. Nobody likes new laws. As we've been, as we have changed the rules, the ordinances in the city of Mount Pleasant, I've gotten nothing but praise from the community members. Not one person has come up and complained that they now can no longer tether a dog on a chain for the, for its entire life. It has to be either in a, a kennel by a certain size or it has to be in a yard with a fence. When it comes to spay and neuter, when we collect an animal running at large, the homeowner or the animal owner is now required to have that animal spayed or neutered unless they can show that that animal is a breeding dog or cat. And they have to prove it. And when they don't prove it, they get a ticket and they pay a fine. If they don't pay their fine, they go to jail. So the ordinances here in, in our city are still light compared to most communities in the metroplex. But we have gradually increased the penalties to reduce the number of animals in the city. Still got a problem, still see dogs running loose, still see cats running loose. But it's not near as bad as it was seven years ago.
What can we do if we wanted to make at least a small step? What could we do?
I would suggest seeing what other counties are doing, especially in the metropolitan areas.
Well, it doesn't mean they're doing it right. What do you think we could do?
Sure. I think, I think animals running freely in the county is troubling. When I walk in my neighborhood, quite frankly, I carry a pistol on me because of the dogs. That's sad, but I've been charged many times. I wish my neighbors in the county would kennel their animals or have them in a fenced-in yard. My yard is not fenced, but I have an underground electric fence. My dogs don't get out. And I've got signs in my yard that say it's an underground electric fence dogs are contained by. Trying to be a responsible pet owner. But I have dogs that come up into my yard that like to roughhouse with my animals. So I have to be careful of that. You know, I would love to see dogs not running free. I would love to see people to spay and neuter. You know, so when we take an animal from the county that's brought in and the person from the county wants to collect their animal, how do I write them a ticket for not spaying and neutering? How do I enforce my city ordinance on a county resident?
Well, that's why I'm asking, what would be something reasonable that we could do to say, if your dog, if your dog is running free, you better be able to prove that he's been spayed, neutered, vaccinated, something.
Right. And those, those, you know, again Judge, I would have to do a lot of research on what other counties are doing to get you those answers. But it'd be awesome.
Again, I don't know that we need to copy other counties. Maybe we need to be a leader. Maybe we need to figure out what's the reasonable.
Sure. Well, I'm always one who doesn't like to reinvent the wheel. There's always somebody out there doing a better job than, than we are. So whenever I'm looking at a, a policy change or an ordinance change in, in the city, first thing we do is go out and look to what other people are already doing it. Because somebody's already doing it. And we find those answers. And, because a lot of these have to be vetted as well over time in the courts to make sure they're legal.
Okay. All right. No, I know you don't have all the answers. We sure don't have them. You've got a lot more.
It's a tough, it's a tough business. I'd love to give it away.
What, uh, what's the $5,000? What is that for?
That's going to be for recurring equipment costs.
Just, is that, and so if we agree at the, with the $5,000, whatever we're paying, it's, it's no guarantee next year, it may go up some, depending on what's going on.
There's a, there's a CPI every year. So Commissioner Fitch, the CPI has always been there.
So who came up with these figures? City Council or your CPA or your auditor?
These figures, these figures are.
Can go up this year.
Are, are based on, if we just did the CP, CPI, probably usually the 3%, you would have went up $100, okay? Based on the number of animals that are coming in, you're still way below what that number should be. And I'm talking almost half.
The $40,000 contract began several years ago. It's crept up with, with consumer price index changes there. But, you know, we had agreed on that 40,000 a few years ago.
Yeah, but if we, if we base the, the contract rate on the number of animals that are coming in, because we, we do that with other entities. For example, don't put this in the paper, Gilmer pays 33,000 a year. They can only give 200 animals. They pay 33,000 a year for 200 animals.
And that's it?
What do you mean that's it?
Okay. What do you mean? Gilmer pays 200,000?
They have a, they have a limit of how many animals they can bring us. Divide 200 by 30, 33,000. They pay an extraordinary rate to give us 200 animals. Pittsburgh's same way.
So y'all do Gilmer, Pittsburgh, who else y'all do?
Titus County. But in Titus County, we do not take animals from Winfield. They're a incorporated city. Nor do we take animals from Talco because they're a incorporated city. We don't have contracts with them.
They do their own thing?
I assume they do. I assume they just ignore the problem.
All right. Thank you.
You bet.
Good luck with your grand opening. Hopefully you get that done quickly without more delays. And we do appreciate the service. We don't like having to pay for it, but who does? But we appreciate what we get very much. All right. Thank you. We need to consider and possibly approve that animal contract with its revisions. Again, 40, 43, 200 plus $5,000 annual fee for supplies and equipment replacement to be effective October 1. So we can do that now.
What's the deadline on this?
October 1. October 1 is the.
Do it by the October. Yeah, we'll want to consider that at budget time. Sure. Could you come up to the mic so folks at home can hear you?
You talked about something the county can do in checking for vaccinations and whatnot. There's currently state law in place that each pet owner, dog owner, has to have their animal vaccinated. But we don't have the manpower or the authority to go out and just because a dog's running around, make a pet, a pet owner produce it. The only time that gets involved is if the animal bites somebody and then, of course, it's looked into at that point and then they're ticketed from then. The animals running at large in the county, that, that's something that y'all will have to deal with, but you're also going to have to look at how are we going to enforce that? There's three or four deputies on a shift. If that law was put in place, the, the number of calls that they would take would be just astronomical. But then you push it down on us and then you're going to have to get more manpower to, to do something like that. So that's just a, just a comment.
Yeah. And, and I think there's even limitations on what a county of our size can do as far as regulations, I believe, but.
I'm sure about that. It could open up a big can of worms for something.
All right. Thank you. All right, is there anyone that is ready now to approve this contract renewal?
I'm not ready right now. I'd like to make a motion, we table this and do a little homework on it.
Motion and a second, motion by Commissioner Fitch, second by Commissioner Riddle to table this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Uh, where did Glenn go? Let me, let me check and see if Glenn Calvert's on a super tight schedule or not.
I'll say this, if you want to stop your, them cats and dogs from multiplying, don't do the damn thing. I bet I spent $1,000 because every cat I could neuter in my neighborhood, they'd get in that trap, got neutered. And ain't had any kittens in five years. So I mean, that's, it's, be responsible about it. Spend $1,000, go with one. And then it's tomorrow, why? In your neighborhood?
Hold on, what are we, what are we discussing here? Okay, all right. Let's, if you'll recall from the last meeting, there were some questions regarding these reserve deputies and reserve investigators. So we've got more folks here to explain this situation. In fact, we've even got more reserves to consider today. So I'd like to start with item number six, to consider and possibly approve Marcus Carlock to serve as a reserve investigator for the county attorney. This is not a position that we've ever had before. It's probably quite rare and it's something that's been recently addressed by the Attorney General's office. And it is something that is allowable. What I want Marcus and Paul to do is to explain what's going on here. Neither one was able to come to our last meeting and so we were kind of left at the mercy of my feeble explanation. So if you'll provide us with more insight on this and help us to understand why this would be a win-win situation for us.
Okay. There, I want to thank y'all for the opportunity to come and speak to with you today. Hate I missed the last time. I got a call from the county clerk's office about 8:15 that I had a felon who was wanted sitting in Jerry's office up there. So I could respond to that fairly quickly. And dang, if I got him over there to jail to book him, I'm still going to make it by nine o'clock, but his blood pressure was 220 over 140. So I had to take him to the hospital. So I didn't get a chance to make it last time. I was surprised because I had several people say, hey, I didn't even know you arrested anybody. Well, usually at least two or three times a month, somebody will stumble through here that's got a warrant, that either goes to Jones' office or our office down there, and I end up booking them for their felony or misdemeanor charge that they, they've got pending against them. So anyway, I do apologize for not being here. A couple of things I want to address is there, there has been changes in the law. And the state legislature allows now for county attorneys and district attorneys to form a reserve program. And that's written into the law. That's only been changed about two years. The other law that I want to say, comment on is, two years ago, the legislation, legislators put an emphasis on courtroom and courthouse security. They mandated, number one, that all the bailiffs go to initially a 40-hour school, which I went to, but now I think it's down to like an eight-hour school, that they, they go ahead and cut the, the amount of training that they needed to be a bailiff in a, in a courtroom. So, but what it did do is it required us, like me and Ken, to start really looking at what security we were able to provide for the courts. And, and also the courthouse. We've made a lot of changes in this courthouse as a result of, of that. The metal detector is one of those things. So then now, when you come to county court, and some of these guys are felons too, but they've got a few misdemeanor charges they need to clear up as well, we screen them out there. Now, I've been very, very fortunate to save the county money on the screening process because I've got a constable, two constables actually, who have allowed me to use their reserves to cover that, that program out there, or cover the screening process while we do it. They come in the morning, they'll come in the afternoon, they do it, I'm out there with them until I'm called into court and need, and do the docket and do the other things that a bailiff is required to do in court. But I can tell you, when Harold left us and took a sabbatical, I guess, I ended up as just me and Lisa after that. And I didn't call on the sheriff's office to send me a deputy over here, which they will do, I can tell you. They, they, they've been more agreeable that if I needed that, they would do it. But I haven't had to do that and I'm glad to see that Harold's now back on the list. Now, how much he'll be able to help me, I don't know. But I'm just telling you, he needs to be commended for the outstanding job he did of volunteering and giving you guys, of his time to help me secure this courtroom. And he does the same thing over JP Court. Right? Yeah. So anyway, that, when Marcus came to me and asked me about the possibility of, of forming a reserve program, it's been something that I've been thinking about for a while. It's been something that I would like to do. Now, Marcus also had with him, and he's got with him today, a copy of the Attorney General's opinion that says that even as a district clerk, he can be a reserve. Let's talk a little bit about who can be in the courtroom with a gun legally. The judge can, the prosecutor can, the bailiff can, and then any commissioned peace officer can. Or even whether he's full-time or reserve, it doesn't really matter. He can be armed in that courtroom. If the judge agrees, that's what he needs to do. Well, as far as I'm concerned, from the schooling that I've been to, all of our courts are understaffed. Whether you've got one person out here or two, you really need a minimum of two and most of the times, it's better to have three. Same thing for, and I'll let Ken talk about that. But let's get to Marcus just for a minute. The advantage of having him as a reserve officer simply allows us to have another person in our courthouse who has the ability to be a law enforcement officer if he's needed. And to me, that's important because we don't have a sheriff's office in this courtroom and we don't have one over at the annex. If I need help over here, the closest person to me is Ken. And he can be here in a minute, minute and a half. Same thing for him. I'm just short distance away. After that minute or so, you're looking at the constables that can be here in two to three minutes. That's if they're in their office and they're ready to, and they hear the call. And then for the sheriff's office, you're looking at three to four minutes before they can be able to respond. If I've got Marcus over there, who is a reserve, and he can be in Ken's office to help him in 30 seconds, he's also in that courtroom as well. And also, if Ken's out of pocket or he's gone to lunch and Marcus happens to be there, he can be here to help me in a minute. So that's why it made sense to me and John Mark that we would go ahead and utilize him as a reserve. He may not be over in this courthouse, but he can be here in a few minutes. And let me say this, I'm in a unique position to, because over all the time that I've worked down there, one of my jobs was to review the videos of what these officers and deputies do. And the reason I do that is basically because we want to make sure all the elements of the offense is together with the video and that kind of thing. And so I've watched Sergeant Carlock here make a lot of arrests. And I can tell you, he does a good job. And I wouldn't be recommending him as reserve if I didn't feel that way, if I didn't know that. So that's a, that's the definition of what I want to do as a program. There's one other thing that I did want to mention. I'm not going to work forever, I mean, although a lot of people think I might. I will retire someday. And what I'd like to be able to do is have a reserve that could come down there and work for me for two or three months and make that transition smoother. Make sure he wants to do what I do on a daily basis. And, and make sure he's at least aware of how that system works and, and what we process and what we do down there. So that's just another advantage of. So, that's just another advantage of having my own reserve program. But I will... Marcus, give it to him, you want a second?
Well, thank y'all for having me, and I would've been here two weeks ago also, but my wife was having a baby, and I don't think that was something I could've put off, so... But as a reserve, also, this is not a paid position. And as a reserve, I'm not able to take on any extra security work, that's against the law. So, this isn't a money-making, you know, opportunity for me. This is just a need that I felt that I can actually step in as a public servant and help the county. I don't anticipate it'll cost the county one penny. I've got my own weapon, I'm willing to buy my own badge. I mean, during district court, there are many times that we run courtroom A and courtroom B, and like Paul was saying, we're understaffed over there. And so, it's just the ability to have a little bit of extra safer area. We deal with a lot of sensitive matters. We have felons, we have people in family court that are getting their children taken away. And if anybody's ever seen the Smith County courthouse shooting, you know, if you haven't, watch it. I mean, that's one hour away from here, and that was intense. And you're talking about multiple, what, eight deputies against one person, and they were outgunned, so...
Just to clarify, Marcus, this doesn't mean you're taking time away from the clerk's office to become a deputy in a different role or capacity, correct?
Exactly, and I've already discussed with Paul and Mr. Coburn, and they have no expectations of me coming over here and participating in an active role as an investigator. I just went to them and asked about becoming a reserve, and it's strictly for a security measure. And I had the opportunity to actually go to Wood County several weeks ago, which is a county that's comparable to, I would say, our size. Their courthouse, you have zero access unless you walk through a scanner, and that's manned by at least one bailiff, if not two. When they're running district court, they have three to four bailiffs, and those are armed people. You know, right now, we have one full-time bailiff and one part-time bailiff. So, this is just another thing that we can do that's, I'm not gonna be playing an active role as a police officer, running the streets, you know, things like that. It's just a matter of me being armed, and if the need arises, then I'm there, so that's it.
All right. Okay, commissioners, anything that is still unclear, it's a good time to ask any of these fellows?
It's not clear to me. I'm sure that everybody's got their tax statement, just like we didn't have a county investigator. No other county our size around here has a county investigator. But it was a job created in a situation just like we're talking about now, and then it become a permanent job. Now, we got Paul, full-time, permanent investigator. Anytime you create these positions, part-time or whatever, they always end up costing the taxpayers money. They never, the government never ever decreases the number of people on the payroll. We started off, when Lumina started down, 124 employees, we got over 140, and people wanted to keep adding every day. So, it don't make any difference to me, but the taxpayers probably need to know every time we create a new job, a new position, a new something to do, another part-timer. It always, nobody ever reduces spending. We keep increasing the budget. How much money we collecting property tax now? A lot more than we did before Lumina started, they're decreased in value. But that's all right. We can always find a reason to spend money. I could do it at my house, you can do it at your house, I need a new plate or whatever. And it's just a matter of common sense and running this county with little efficiency in mind instead of a convenience. Thank you.
I'd just like to speak real quickly. What we've been having going on over there is, we'll have Woody up front running the metal detector, and then we'll have something going on in courtroom A, and we'll have something going on in courtroom B at the same time. And so, then we have to make the choice, do we pull Woody off of the metal detector to go in and bailiff in the other courtroom? So, this isn't something that he's looking to get paid for, he's not looking to get extra money for. In fact, if you approve it, I would approve it under the fact that he's not gonna get any more money. But the reason I want him over there, and the judges want him over there, is because it's one more good guy with a gun, so, thank you.
Okay. Well, commissioners, you know, it's hard to relate to these jobs that you're hearing about unless you've seen firsthand what goes on in county and district court. I would invite any of you to come and sit through a little bit of a felony court or a county court someday, and see the number of people, see the type of situations we're dealing with, and try to get a feel for the potential problems that we're dealing with, and to understand that these guys right here are trying to stay ahead of the curve. That's all they're trying to do. They're not trying to create additional jobs or make their own jobs easier. They're trying to improve the safety and security of this courthouse, of the annex, of the people that are in the courtrooms, of the people that work for the county as efficiently as they can. I don't know of any better way to do that other than utilizing ideas like this. And, you know, this has come up in budget before, this position of the county investigator. Please, come and spend a few hours with Paul Lindsey sometime, Commissioner Riddle, and see what he does, see what his day consists of. It's, again, it's hard to relate to, and it's hard to understand why Titus County would have to have this position and other counties don't. I guarantee you, there's something different between those counties, I'm not sure what it is, but please, come and spend some time in these fellows' shoes and understand what their jobs consist of, and hopefully be better able to, you know, to understand what's at stake.
I've asked these other counties that do not have a county investigator, what do they do, more than one of them? And the sheriff department furnishes the time, the personnel, when they need people at the courtroom and so forth. It's where they sit their... We don't have a sheriff department, and then all these other, they don't have all these other people. The sheriff's department does it all, or provides it for them. I don't know anybody...
Well, the sheriff's department can't provide people to review cases on behalf of the county attorney. And bailiffing is one small part of Paul Lindsey's week. I can assure you, it's not the bulk of his job being a bailiff. That's just one hat that he occasionally wears. Go down there and spend some time in his office. Again, I can't speak for these other counties, I don't know, but I do know what Paul Lindsey does, and I know the value that he gives to the county attorney's office, and it would be better for all of us if each of you understood that as well.
I've been in business a long time. I can always justify it. If you want to justify spending money, get your kids to explain it to you. They can justify it. We can always justify it.
Well, again, I'll only say it one more time, come spend a little bit of time in any of these positions and see what goes on there. Gentlemen, thank you very much. Commissioners, anybody else have a question about this subject before we consider this vote on making Marcus Carlock a reserve investigator? Okay, need a motion if you all are in favor of this, or if you're not in favor of it. This is your time. Okay, so we don't want Marcus Carlock to be a reserve investigator, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I'll go ahead and say it, what everybody's thinking, and I've spoken with Marcus, so he knows my thoughts on this, but I just don't want my district clerk to be responsible for having to do the security, taking away any of his time from his office. Although I know there's times he's actually standing in the courtroom, so he's right there, you know? I think it looks, it appears to be a conflict of interest to me, and I have heard from several people, lots of people, they're not particularly crazy about our district clerk carrying a gun, or we're gonna have to have our county clerk carry a gun, what else? I also have a question on the sheriff's reserves, do they get paid when they do reserve time? So, they're free also. Could we get some more sheriff's reserves? I'm for that.
Not all of them are free.
They cost us to have a sheriff's reserve. They get so much an hour or something.
Woody does. That's the only one.
Woody's not a reserve, he's part-time.
He's for the constable's office, part-time. But actual reserve's free anyway, so we... I'm in support of the sheriff's reserve program. I'm in support of y'all getting a reserve program with, through John Mark. If it's free, and these guys have the time to come volunteer and armed, and they have their officer certification, I just do not like the sound of it or the fact of it that Marcus is gonna do it or has to do it. I mean, like just the example about Woody may have to go to courtroom B. Well, Marcus, can you, I'm looking through the glass at you, can you come over here for a minute or two? I just feel like the county wants their district attorney, district clerk, to be doing the clerking job. And over that, there's enough times we had to do other jobs on our own that nobody knows about, but I just don't like the sound of it, and that's why I'm against it, so... I don't know, if we don't make a motion or anything, it just gets dropped or whatever, but I guess I could make a motion that we...
Can I say one?
Drop it.
Can I say just one thing?
Yes, I respect all y'all's opinions.
We have, and I definitely respect y'all's too. Let's see. Now, one thing that we have been charged with as well is, I believe a Senate Bill 19 came out, and we have to have a courthouse security committee. And I don't know if you have attended that yet.
No, I hadn't been here long enough with all these unfunded mandates.
It's another unfunded mandate, and we have to come up with a plan, okay? And our next meeting is gonna be May the 23rd. So, anybody that has a better idea of how to do security, that would be a great day to meet with us. We'll be doing a, just a discussion on how we're going to man the courthouse and secure the, you know, over here as well, so... You know, if y'all are against that, then we'll have another opportunity to bring it up again.
I'm not against security, I'll make that clear. I'm not against security.
I mean against...
Yes, and as far as speaking for the people of the county, from what I hear, and what I actually feel my own self personally, I just don't feel like it's the county clerk's job to be, district clerk's job to have to tote and be part-time security, you know, even if it's free.
Certainly, and we understand...
It's a conflicting interest, it's a conflicting duty, I'd say that, to me. I hate it. I'd rather just ask Tim to send somebody over, if we think it's hard, you can't predict craziness anyway, you know? And I'd feel terrible if something, a wild man pulled in there and threw a bomb out or something, but that's my thoughts on it.
I totally understand.
No right or wrong, I guess.
I understand that. We come up with this to save the county money. So, if there's something, if y'all want to hire somebody to do it, I totally understand that. But this is a cost-saving method that we thought that we would come up with, and so, you know, if you guys have any other ideas on how to accomplish what we need to get accomplished, that's what it is.
All right. You know, the last thing I would say too, to talk about what Ken's talking about, is we're understaffed on those bailiffs. We don't have enough of them. And the only other way to get them is either through a reserve program or hire them, one or the other. And we've been forced to do that to just make sure we had one all the time, Woody, and Woody does a good job. But we're trying, as bailiffs for those courts, to do this as cheaply as we possibly can. That's why, you know, I mean, I understand about how we don't want to spend a lot of taxpayers' money and stuff like that, but that's because we don't come to and ask for two new bailiffs to cover those courts. We try to do it on reserves, or do it any way we can other than hire new employees. I mean, it's really the way that works. The legislature mandated that we do this committee that he's talking about, and that's gonna be one of my recommendations, is that we figure out a way to get some more bailiffs in there, because we don't have enough.
I agree, I agree. I agree with the reserve program. I agree with the free. I just don't agree with pulling my district clerk out to help do any of that. I just don't agree with that.
The only reason John, you called them to action, if it's happening...
An emergency, full-blown.
Do what?
Yeah, full-blown emergency, active shooter or something.
I mean, if something happens, someone came with a gun, that's just one of the guns. I'm a business owner too. I've been in small business two and a half years, so I don't have a budget money. When I took office, I ran a conservative platform. I didn't go in and go through my budget and buy fancy furniture or fancy electronics or equipment. I utilized the equipment the county already had. I got a new scanner from one of the JP offices, a desk from David. I mean, I didn't go buy a new desk, I used the, used desk, I was sitting there. So, I know how, you're welcome to go through my budget. I mean, the only reason this would be used is if something drastic happened. It's not like I'm gonna go play bailiff or, you know, be a security officer. I'm just there on my first game with a gun. Then I'm in office with a gun, and that's it.
Typically, you're in the courtroom there as the district clerk.
I'm in the courtroom, you know, by the side of the judge. If something happened, it's just one of them being on the market, standing there at the door and screening people or...
That would be when it's the most useful, I guess, yeah.
That's it. I mean, I'm not complaining, I'm not investigating, or this is just another 20-second county money, that's it. I had to go through my budget, y'all are welcome to go through my budget by now, if you see any, you know, brand-new desk or whatever, you know, point it out to me, please.
All right, well, if I could appropriately make the motion, I would, but if I can't get a second, there's no point in me, if I can't get a motion, there's no point in me trying to make that motion. So, thank you guys for presenting your positions. We'll have to discuss this at a later date.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item number seven, considering possibly approve Harold Connor to serve as a reserve deputy constable for precinct one, three, and four, and...
As I said before, Harold has been a lot of help to the county court. Constable Durant has been more than helpful in utilizing, helping me staff this metal detector out here. So, I'd appreciate it if y'all would consider him. I know he's got a lot to tell y'all about, but anyway, I'm just telling him he's a good guy.
And Harold had previously retired, and now we've got Constable Durant's gonna explain to us why he wants to come out of retirement.
He retired back in January after helping me and you and all of Titus County for no pay for 16 years. He went home, and I guess he went fishing a little bit and split some wood and scratched his head and decided, boy, I really want to be back out there. So, he approached me a few weeks ago and wanted to know if I'd accept him back into the reserve program, and I didn't hesitate, because he's been such a solid hand for us. He's just, he's bailiff this court, he's bailiff over in district court when they're shorthanded, he helps me in my court. Big asset to the citizens, he gets out and patrols the neighborhoods and just be seen. Being seen, law enforcement card deters crime, and that means a lot. He goes around our county schools, patrols there, give them a little more sense of security, seeing an officer swinging around the parking lots out there. I know Dana's seen us out there at Harts Bluff. Just a major asset. He is, he helps us with our court, serving civil process when we get overwhelmed. He helps serve misdemeanor traffic warrants and whatnot. And I have the paperwork at the office, and I think I presented it to y'all in the past, where for what he does, going out and knocking on doors, trying to contact people, encourages those people with warrants to, I better get up there before I get arrested and take care of my fines. So, it's thousands and thousands of dollars that he has generated just by knocking on doors, which, I'm a one-man office, y'all know, and there's a lot of duties, I wear a lot of hats also, and it's virtually impossible for me to get out and do the things that he does, to assist me, assist this county at no charge. There, well, I say no charge, there is a little, I think y'all are gonna approve a $50 bond, and that's for one year for him to be bonded, that's $50. Every, within every four-year period, there's a number of training hours that we have to maintain. Some of those can be gotten absolutely free at the college, or we're attending a bailiff, that courtroom bailiff security thing that we're mandated to take, it's a free class... It's a free class next week at the county extension office. That's free training that we'll get right here at home. Occasionally, we have to go off somewhere, but most of his things can be gotten on a computer locally and for minimum cost. So, I just ask that y'all would approve him.
Re-deputize him, okay?
He's... if I... I think he's great. I think we're lucky, lucky people to have him.
Thank you.
This would be the cover help of the courtrooms, too, wouldn't he?
Sure.
Why did they not consider him?
I think they did consider him, and there's times when, like they said, there's two district courts going on. Well, you have to have... you know, everybody's fallen through the front door now.
Right.
So, you have to have somebody maintaining the security coming into the building. And then you have two bailiffs in a courtroom. And then there may be county court going on at the same time, or we may have stuff going on across the street, so we're spread out thin. There's only so much can be covered. I know the sheriff's department had worked some, but they're shorthanded. You take a deputy off the street and put him in a courtroom, and that puts everybody else behind on the street answering calls, and it reduces response time and endangers the public, really. But we've had... we had an incident last week at our courtroom. I don't know. Y'all probably got the wave, text alert, emergency at the Justice Center. Well, we were having, I think it was kid truancy court or something, JP 2 was. Constable Barrett was out of town. The reserve officer, Lisa, was in the courtroom. And I was out north of town in the White Oak area serving an eviction and writ of possession. And so, she was by herself. And a very large 16-year-old kid went ape. And she couldn't... I mean, I couldn't have handled a kid by myself. So, response, hit the button, and we got them down there within two or three minutes. But things happen in a hurry in two or three minutes. Bad, bad things can happen. I'm not saying to hire more bailiffs or put on Marcus or whatever y'all decide, but it is something. It's a serious issue. The shooting that Paul was talking about at Smith County might never have happened. Never happened before. Oh, it's not going to happen. Well, it happened. Things happen, and things happen quickly. And, you know, it's just something we got to keep a... if we can keep a reserve program going, I think the sheriff's office... correct me. I think y'all have two reserves, is that correct? Two reserves. And the reserves are people who typically have full-time jobs, and they just come out on their days off or a few hours after they get off or something like that. In my case, Harold is retired. He retired from the power plant. But he had reserved for about 10 years before I took him on at the sheriff's department. They... at that time, like, this was in 2000, whatever it was, too, he cut out the reserve program. And he still wanted to reserve, and he approached me. And I knew him because I had been here. As a matter of fact, when I was at the police department, I had occasion to work with him when he was at the sheriff's office. Reserve programs is really cheap. And I mean, they're qualified people. They've gone through training, the same training that we have. They keep their... maintain their certification, their education. They're just people that they don't want to do it full-time because they, you know, for whatever reason. But they do have it in them, and they want to contribute to the citizens of the county. So, I would ask, like I said, I would ask that y'all would allow me to put Harold back on. And I think he will not disappoint you.
Thank you.
Well, I'll be glad to have Mr. Connor back. I'll make the motion that we approve him to be reserve deputy constable for precinct one, three, and four. Glad to have him.
Motion, Commissioner Fitch, Second Commissioner Riddle, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good deal.
I'm going to jump quickly to item number 11. I've got Glenn Calvert here, and he's a valuable guy, and I want to get him in and out as quickly as I can. We're here to consider and possibly approve hiring Prefort Complex Designs to do a preliminary investigation of the courthouse annex for possible remodel considerations. I met with Glenn a couple of weeks ago, and we walked through the building over there. And we're not ready to sit down and draw plans for a remodel. We're not even ready to tell you that it's the right building to remodel. We're here to begin that process and let a professional evaluate that building from an engineer's point of view and tell us what the pros and cons might be on doing some remodel work over there. So, welcome, Glenn. Thanks for being here with us. And I sent these guys a copy of your email, but if you'd kind of go over for us what you think you can get done for us with a couple of days' work.
Okay. Good morning. We did spend some time with Judge Lee, well, two or three weeks ago. And we stayed after and walked the project or the building a little bit more. We looked at where we thought buildings started and buildings stopped. I think there's at least three or four different buildings over there that were built at different times that have been combined into one. And I think some of those things need to be investigated to see what the pros and cons would be. The way I understand it, either renovate, remodel, whatever you want to call it, the existing building, or potentially relocate. The things we would look at are what are the... what are the existing constraints that you would have to work around to make the building do what you want it to do? And the way I understand it, at least initially, is additional courtroom, some security concerns, which we've already heard about that this morning, what the HVAC system looks like, if there are any structural issues, if there are any egress issues. I think that's one of the things that would definitely need to be looked at is how do people get out of that building if you do put another courtroom in it? So, the investigation would not only include time in the building, but also some code investigation to see what you would have to face going forward. It would not include a cost to renovate. It would just be basically a list of pros and cons that we would present and be available for discussion so that you guys and ladies can make decisions on what you want to do going forward.
And your fee structure, as you've laid out for us, would include a couple of personnel, one priced at $140 an hour, one priced at $100 an hour. And you said that you could do that on a not-to-exceed $4,000. Could possibly be less, but you felt like that would be the high end to do the work that you need. And then a formal written report would be another $2,000 if we wanted that for a maximum total cost of $6,000.
That's correct.
And that would involve a couple of days' work, give or take, to get that done.
I would say that's probably at least four man days in the field and probably at least three man days in the office.
And what... and you've heard what we could expect of that. Again, this is not going to give us drawings. This is not going to give us, you know, even the start of a remodel. But years ago, the comments that were made is that building is too old to spend a lot of money for a remodel on. And maybe it is. And what I know that Glenn can do for us is to tell us these are the pros and cons of work on that building and hopefully help us to make the decision, yes, that's the thing that we should do, is build that second courtroom over there, or no, the cost is so prohibitive that it would be foolish to begin that work. So, this is who you would be dealing with. We've talked about the costs involved. What would you like to do here? Would you like to hire Prefort to begin this process with this very initial step?
I would make the motion that we hire him to do it.
Would you like to have him provide that additional $2,000 written report on top of the $4,000? And tell us why that... you said recommended. That was your recommendation that we do that, but that gives us something to fall back on rather than just our memory and the minutes of the...
Correct. We could talk about it all day long, but I think in the report, it would give us the opportunity to organize that in a way that you could keep it, use it, critique it for yourself. It could be the basis of ongoing discussions.
Is it something we could buy later? The $2,000 report? If we hire a contractor in the future and say, hey, I really need to see specs on this? We pay the $2,000 then?
You wouldn't be getting any specs, and I do think that...
Or your recommendation? Is that what it is? It's a report?
My recommendation is to either get it now or not get it at all. And the reason why is because if you want that report in a year or two years, by that time, I've done a few things since then and have forgotten what we saw.
Okay, it's nothing that you do at the time that we can buy later. It's all or none, okay?
Well, it's not all or none. You don't have to get the report.
Yeah, yeah. You just can't get it later.
But I'm just saying that if you get it later, one, it probably won't be as thorough because it won't be as fresh on our minds. And two, we may be swamped with work at that time, and it could be delayed, so...
That sounds pretty common.
Can I add that to my motion?
Sure.
The report? Put the report in.
Okay. Motion's made by Commissioner Riddle to hire Prefort Complex Designs and Glenn and his team to do this preliminary study and provide us with a written report at a cost not to exceed $4,000 for the investigative work plus a fixed $2,000 for a written report. That's the motion.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. I'm very glad that you're willing to do this and could find the time.
What we'll try to do, and we'll coordinate, I guess, with you to get access, but we will try to get on this during the month of May and try to have a report in your hands by the end of the month of June. Is that okay?
That's great. Thank you, Glenn.
Thank Glenn.
Let's jump back to the conversation about Harold Connor. Along with that, we need to bond our reserves. So, item number eight is considering possibly approve a bond for Harold Connor, who is coming back to serve for us.
Make a motion.
Motion's made by Commissioner Fitch. I think he's mentioned a $50 cost there to get this bond.
Second.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riddle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then same situation for item number nine for our existing deputy constable, Mark Davis, to get him renewal on his bond for his service as reserve deputy constable precinct two.
Make that motion.
Motion's made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
And second by Commissioner Fitch to approve bond for Mark Davis, precinct two, reserve deputy constable. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then one more of those for our new elections administrator, Pamela Holmes, who is hard at work with the beginning of early voting today. Pam needs to have that $5,000 bond, and she has gotten that. It's ready for your approval.
Make that motion.
Motion's made by Commissioner Parker.
Second.
Second Commissioner Applewhite. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll now jump over item number 11. Go to item number 12, considering possibly approve payment of a pauper's funeral in the amount of $950 to Bates Cooper Sloan Funeral Home for Nancy Jane Walther. Normally, I do not bring these to you until I've had a chance to meet with the... somebody who can tell me what's going on. And I try to limit these to situations where we have a deceased individual that does not have friends or family. In this particular case, the applicant here is a relative. In fact, I believe the son of the deceased, Nancy Jane Walther. I have not met with him. I have not even talked to him. He filled this out at the funeral home. I had a discussion with the folks at the funeral home, and I said, in my opinion, this did not meet our specifications, but I will leave that up to you. We have a situation where this son, anyway, says that the deceased has no money of any kind, no property, no automobiles, no insurance, no social security for burials, no other assets. He does not state his ability or why he's unable to help, but I am assuming it is because he doesn't have money either. But I have not talked to him. So, I can't come to you and tell you that I am recommending this. I am simply telling the funeral home that I will present this to the commissioners' court and let them make this decision.
Make a motion that we don't pay it.
All right. Motion is made by Commissioner Fitch that we deny this particular pauper's funeral request.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Parker. All in favor, say aye. Or any discussion, first of all, any discussion. Now, this is... this seems cold-hearted. I feel the need to go over once, one more time. We're not in the charity business as much as we would like to be. These are unique situations, and I hate saying no on something like this because this is tough. But this is a matter where we would be utilizing tax dollars in a charity situation. And so, again, that's what I try to use as a filter each time one of these comes to me. And I don't get very many of these. I must make that clear. Usually, when I give them my speech, they understand and they go on, but not in this case. So, I do have a motion, and I have a second, and that is to deny this request for pauper's funeral. All in favor of this denial, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Item number 13 is time for approval of oral and written reports of county officials.
On the... point of discussion, you know Dallas County?
Thanks, sir.
Just within the last couple of years, they took cremation on pauper's funerals.
These would always be a cremation. They would always be. And it's a price that is given to us as the county. An individual cannot go and ask for the $950 county pauper's funeral special. That's not an option. This is a bare-bones cost. Cremation is always involved. There are no services. That's it. It is the disposal of the body, essentially, and cremation is cheaper than a burial.
Make a motion, reapprove the report?
Second.
Motion's made for approval by Commissioner Fitch, and I didn't catch you made the second. Commissioner Applewhite seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number 14, consider and possibly approve our treasurer's report.
Make a motion, approve the report?
Motion's made by Commissioner Fitch to approve the treasurer's report.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Applewhite, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number 15, approve budget amendments. There are no budget amendments today. Item number 16, sign pay orders and approve payment of bills.
Make a motion, repair bills?
Motion made by Commissioner Applewhite.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Parker, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closing comments, let me begin with today's, the start of early voting. Early voting will go on Monday through Friday of this week, and I think Monday, Tuesday of next week. On your ballot is consideration of whether or not to allow liquor stores in the city limits. And then, you have a bond election. If you are in the Mount Pleasant ISD area, you have a large bond to consider. So, that's going on under the direction of our new elections administrator, Pam. So, go over there and make sure she's doing okay. This is her first one, and I'm sure it's going smoothly. The 1:00, 1:00, we'll all be at the meeting, and I've got that posted as an agenda item. We won't take any action there on that, but we'll all be in attendance to hear from Mike Anderson, our, who's going to come over from Atlanta, our district engineer. And we will have Major Nordlow, we'll have other representatives from DPS. I think Deanne Simmons will come from Atlanta, and we'll meet there at the DPS office today at 1:00 after lunch. Let's see, I have not received a follow-up, but I got this postcard several weeks ago. National Day of Prayer, May 2nd. There may be multiple things going on during that day. The Calvary Chapel is having a National Day of Prayer luncheon, May 2nd, at their church. You'll receive a formal invitation in a few weeks. I haven't gotten that formal invitation yet, so I can't even tell you the time. I would assume around noon. Calvary Chapel, National Day of Prayer luncheon, May 2nd. That's all that I have. Commissioner Parker?
I don't have anything.
Okay.
Don't have anything, sir?
I don't have anything.
Commissioner Riddle?
No.
All right. With anyone else in the audience have a comment or a question? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Well-
We don't-
What's that?
Al. You beat me to it.
Well, I'm considering that kind of a workshop, so, yeah.
We've got the workshop.
Oh, 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 oh. I'm sorry. We do have personnel showing up for this. What time did you tell your guys to be here?
10:30.
10:30. Is anybody here?
I feel like they're probably out.
Out there.
All right. I'm glad you said that. I was going to blow right past that. We do have a seal coating workshop here, and we've got joining us some personnel from the commissioners' offices. So, let's not adjourn quite yet. We will adjourn at the end of that. And let's take a five-minute recess, and then we'll gather back up to begin discussions on seal coating and coordinating those efforts during the season.
Schedule-wise, you're going to be ready in first part of May? Thinking, y'all are?
Depending on the weather.
Yeah, so, pay period-wise, the first day to start, 10-hour days, will be May 6th. That'd be a Monday.
That's, that's, that's good.
And then, we can get on the schedule anyway, you know, because we got that good weather. We're going to be busy getting ready if we're not chip sealing. Wait a minute here, let me see here. Yeah, what's going to hurt us on that? Okay, so, it'll be May 6th. That'd be Monday, is that, or we, does it start, what pay period? How's that work? I know Monday, May 6th would be the first day then. That'd be that start of that pay period. Or does it? It ends on the 1st, doesn't it? It won't matter? Well, let's just start, probably the 6th of May would be good then, looking.
What's going to matter is if we go all through May, then June, July, August, and September.
Mm-hmm.
That's four months. You're going to have three holidays in there that you're going to have to make up those two hours, or you can take comp time or whatever, to make up those two hours of those weeks.
Well, we always were four days at first September.
Equally, it's first September, then we'll tell everybody else it's already, that's sort of thing.
And then, when it's raining, I mean, we'll be, or we got a halfway dry day. We're cleaning up after a storm. We're gonna, we'll be busy anyway, but at least we'll be on the schedule. But hopefully, weather permitting, we can start maybe that May 6th. Mm-hmm, stays cool. I mean, it's just another week or so away.
It's just, that's good weather to play, we're still having to see how it goes.
Mm-hmm.
If it's, we get good weather, I'd like to start that week.
Forty-five, you're looking at it for 50, but.
Well, at least 50 at night, and about 80 every day, at least.
Yeah, it depends on whether we could, we could, we could, uh- Mm-hmm.
The deal is, if we, if we get there in the training, I, you know.
We're going to find other things to do.
So, my plan is, you know, we set a date, we set a date, and I guess, see how it goes, and if the weather's not permitting, then we go back to our business. Like, so, you're going to see what happens. My plan is, like, we're going to have everything there. We'll have chipper there, we'll have oil truck there, we'll have everything, all we have to do, it's, y'all show up with your dump trucks, you know, depending on how many guys you can let go.
It's going to be almost all hands on deck in each precinct, and if something has to be go cut out of the road or do some traffic control, we'll have to use, it's going to take everybody.
No. You said that traffic control, we need, if we got a good stretch that's probably visible, highly run, we can use the cop cars.
Okay.
Put them in front. Because it's good for them to run, and just that when the lights on, they're going to slow down. But we can use them because they said they need to be running, extra 5 have out there. That will shut down a lot of people. If they see that law, they'll, that car, they'll slow down. That'll help a lot of safety, I think.
That sounds good.
One thing that, that I always look at is conduct, uh, we're going to look at the uniform calendar. What do we talk about? The, the life we can make? Yeah. We're going to be about nine days that we'll be holding. We, we can hit our whole precinct in about nine days. Sometimes we're quicker than that if we don't get stuck a lot more. So, all you, so, you know, you guys, yes, everybody. Because I work at 14. Yeah, if we work at 14, we'll knock it out a little quicker probably. So, yeah, I mean, that's the, the, I'm going to say the 27th is a holiday, which is, that's a mow day. Either 28th, 29th, 30th, 31st, you know, 31st on Friday. Will be three days every week, probably a couple of days in the next week. First of June, first, second of June, man.
Well, it's all, while you're, while you're mowing, while the precinct, you need to really do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, or doing some mowing or whatever. So, we want two weeks there for mowing and prepping in the middle.
I think you can still run simple, just if you can get number three to do it. That's twelve guys. It's going to be slower, but you can do it. And especially like, like all marshes, we're trying to have our, our rocks up completely less than miles or more. So, if you can get out of those rocks. But, I mean, there's only times that you got guys on vacation, you got guys on different side. But that's just going to happen, uh. Not like, uh, we thought. I think you can get away with a minimum of 10 guys doing it. It's going to be slow. But, uh, I, 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 and that's, and that's everything. One guy running a chipper, then turn around, or running a sweeper, and turn around, running a packer.
Well, I don't mind myself, the, the, the days if we may have a meeting or something other like that. I don't mind getting out there running a sweeper, running a packer, or whatever. I, yeah, I, I'd be willing to let it get out there definitely. But I don't, if I need to, I, I haven't done a brick one with, you know, putting up that chipper, but if I need to, I can do that too. Dump bag, y'all.
We might let you sit in the cop car with all the lights on and the siren blaring. Yeah. We'll all be all hands on deck and somebody driving back for the Randy's Burgers. Hard on you, Al.
Have you guys, uh, brought up really close when you're working on some? You know, which one's worse? Our problem is, right now, our, we have bad expense, we have to spend. And I don't know if we could probably do it to, to, well, we've got laid out in ten days.
Oh, for all the money you got period by, you've had all well on ten days, you've got to be sure.
You're thinking, hey, anyway, we got that four we didn't mind, yeah, to do that we're going to do.
Yes, we do have a problem. Our, we have some limits of what we're going to start off setting up yet.
We're still, we're still talking about our, and probably, I'm going to say the next week. Me and the, my guys have sat down and looked at the roads. I've driven, they've driven. We've looked at them inside, which is, which is, which one we think needs to be the top priorities.
There's no way they, so you don't, you don't-
Oh, I've got, I've got some, I've got some that, that are not going to have very much working out. But, yeah, we, we showed them some and have got some that are, that are, I could go out and see what's that, as far as that.
What about you, man? Y'all got yours?
Yeah, well, we've got a few in mind, yes. We've, we've got a couple of them that they have prepared for when the engineer was here, that, so.
So, we got, are those your top problems? Do you got a road you want to work on?
We got, we got one, but we're going, we're going to get together and decide on the other.
Miami Park.
What type of road? It was, I think, 3350, the one that was the worst road in Titus County. It's off of 1,000, the one there. It's old D Francisco Road.
3250.
The 3250?
3250.
Yeah. Since it's, you know, we already got the, had the work that they have done on it. We're just going to, we're going to still cut that road out. It's the 0250, 3250.
Uh, round 37, Jimmy?
Yes, yes.
3350?
Yes. Because that's always been, they, when the engineer was here, they had that prepped and everything, so it doesn't like, maybe spot something, but it's ready.
That's the, the loop that goes in before you get into our road and comes all the way back around to our road.
I don't know.
And then, well, you don't go all the way, you let it go.
Our other road, we kind of had to pave it, red done last year, full rock, but getting ready for it.
That was one of the roads there.
Sorry?
That was one of the roads there that they did, they took, worked on for quite a bit. 1250. Yeah.
Well, for, uh, we left it, we used to come back and then a lot of water, but, uh-
That's one of our, that's fixed, we got it.
1250, that's in Bullberry Road. So, I've got probably nine and a half, 10 miles that I've got marked off that I want to get done if I can get to them, to get them done. So, most of them have been prepped and patched and fixed, where the soft spots are ready, and then there's several places that we're going to do, as time allows, between now and the end or during the time. Patching, uh, uh, culvert or two put in, and then, some of our roads are just in good enough shape. They were, one road in particular was prepared about four years ago, County Road 1220, and it was going to be chip sealed and never got chip sealed, so it's got a few minor places to fix. It's going to be ready to do. Organizing how to get all the equipment around to all the various places in that precinct, one end to the other, left to right, north to south, is going to be a challenge. But, uh, we got plenty to do. We, we're ready to go with it, and we're constantly getting something ready for next year, because a lot of these places need to cure. When you go in and pack it and coat it with some type of code mix that needs to cure until next year, so it's not ready to be chip sealed in certain places, so.
So, we got a cure, a year?
Maybe, maybe not that long. We're not really sure, but we want to make sure it's ready and settled, like over a big culvert or two, that it's settled. It's, uh, we put code mix over the top of it and have it ready to be chip sealed over that. We want to make sure it's going to not peel up or turn loose. But for the most part, we got a lot of roads ready to go.
Can we figure out, uh-
I've got, no, I'm not figuring how many miles I'm going to be able to have time to allow me to do it. I'm not sure. But, yeah, we could do, uh, yeah, if we had money and time to do it, we could do close to 10 miles, upwards to even 15 miles. But that's a lot of, a lot of time and money and, uh, good weather and supplies and everything else. So, there's a lot of variables there. We'll all have a really good figure on this after this summer, but if it's anything like last summer, a lot of rain. So, hopefully, it'll be dry. Mm-hmm. And, uh, as far as our breakdowns from our own equipment, other than that, some of that shared equipment, we are in a lot better shape this year because we've been repairing all winter and getting our trucks ready and serviced, and I just put new tires on the oil truck, got, got the motor, the pump all cleaned out in it, all kinds of good service on it, and, uh- As I said, always, most of it, it was some of it's at different locations, like our, our trucks and all of those, and, and, uh, they did get both our trucks back, and they're looking at, trying to figure out what that. What about, uh, so, we're thinking maybe May 6th, we think, to go to the 10-hour days. Regardless, our guys, I can work what we're doing now in 10-hour days. It's just a little more trouble on us, you know? But, uh, as long as we're on that schedule, we'll be ready to go when we're using it, chip sealing or fixing our own roads or mowing or whatever we're going to do. I'm good with the schedule, start it now, at May 6th, and then at least up through September 1st. And then, we'll work around the holidays. Okay, yeah, those extra hour day, so we will. Okay, we'll work that out, because with the, okay. And then, another question- And then another question was on that uh equipment hauling trailer. We've been looking at some uh thirty footers with the, the ramp on the back, it's hydraulic. And the last one we got priced on was something around ten thousand, one hundred dollars. Did y'all get any more back on any of those tile trailers Dana? Like the one we have, that, that we carry our equipment on, it's got that ramp on the back, ours got a nine foot ramp. The one we priced was eleven or twelve? Eleven? Yeah, and the ramp's longer than my ramp though, I say, and it's. Yeah, it was a little more size, it was uh, what's our set, what's my, my trailer's a fifty? Thirty thousand, I don't remember what the, what it carries. Mm-hmm. Wow.
We just need, if we give him, he might come up with something else.
That's the way mine is, but ours is only a nine foot out the back, maybe ten, but it's shorter. Mm-hmm. And then use mine too, because obviously it's, I've, I've got one, so. So, I'm gonna uh, for sure, I'm gonna be using my equipment trailer to help haul the, I can carry two pieces of equipment sometimes on it. Dynasty. Well, if you bought it, just for your own self, I wish you had one. I mean, I, I, I love our trailer, that is uh so nice to have those buttons. Uh, I'd encourage you, cause if we do buy one for the county, it is gonna sit a lot. But uh, cause we use the low board the most, you know, for the big, big stuff, so. The one with three axes? That's a scary looking trailer. Then we'll just do all hands on deck this summer and then, like I said, individual, Al, if you do, that'd just be better next year if you do buy a trailer. Maybe if y'all buy one with a ramp, it'll be nice, yeah. Yeah, it'll be your main trailer, yeah. But it'll carry a uh broom and a steel wheel? Or the, will they do a packer and a broom? Yeah, that's pretty handy. Moving stuff.
Let's say that, that could sell from tall. It should have, not to be in the business, and this is a deep dischannel price, will they buy two of them?
We can sure check on it. That's about, that's a lot. Yeah, at least you can get some recoup on selling your, one you got now, to somebody that's really, really strong. Oh, that one with those big heavy ramps, yeah.
It's gonna get somebody hurt, if it hauls somebody, it's gonna get somebody hurt.
I, I don't know which one you're talking about.
It'd be eight foot, blue ramps on the back, it's just, they're heavy number one. And you just, you gotta manhandle them.
Strong man.
That one, he put two of them, because it's not for the same thing to do. So, and it's penalty, you gotta have penalty's deployed, but you know, we got that, y'all got it on the other truck, y'all got it on that duty, y'all. Penalty and, and we got one, so. Three penalties, it, it, and you know, it's, it's there to anybody who's here. And John can disload it and probably don't get it, so. But you can't give it to one.
Let me cover that up for the general public, so they don't hear that. I really thought that trailer was, that was just sitting there for Joan. Woo, that's rough one.
But like I said, it does a trailer outside, just like that. And you know, I think if we uh, you know, if we go three, I think anywhere we go, you can go any of these trucks like I said. The piece is for each trailer, you know, but you know, the piece. We can meet the best price.
If we're gonna do, it's like if we go buy three trailers, thirty foot trailer with double tail or a high rock double tail, we can price them three quarters. And if we keep dividing up.
Hey!
Yeah, they're eighteen foot and they're heavy, they got four hundred and five, eighteen wheels. And uh here it is, ten thousand, one hundred sixty-nine dollars. Eighteen foot uh. Ten foot, twelve foot ramp, ramp rear door.
Near the thirty? Mm-hmm. So, ours is a nine foot drop, which is pretty steep. That twelve would be a lot better, especially when you back up, sometime you back your backhoe off in a bad place, well, that, that comes off on the back. Yeah, yeah, well, that's just, that's a favor on there. But that twelve foot, it'd even be a little more safe, but you'll need the rubber on there.
Cause I, I'm, I'm weary of that one that, that, yeah, that y'all had to fix the front of them. I haven't had anything else since we got it back, but I'm weary of it.
More money. About, about the gravel pile we got there at the maintenance barn, how much mileage you think we're gonna get out of that? Anybody calculated on that? Oh, yeah, to measure whole pile?
We went back and looked at the, the machines, see, practically got the machines for the piles up there. They're far, pretty sick three mile.
Mm-hmm.
And it was like nine hundred eighty nine. I don't think we can take that. I figured out that's about ninety seven feet. But it went over to measure to make sure that it's going uh.
Thank you, Chris, now, how, how long is that duck tail?
Twelve feet.
Twelve foot duck tail?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Like I said, probably need to get that formula and measure that, see how we wanna do this.
And as yards or tons, what was nine eighty-nine? You thought it might have been nine eighty-nine, what's it, do you remember? So, those receipts said, was it yards or tons or what, was you remember? Okay, nine eighty-nine, okay. Yeah, we need to figure that.
Now, the other pile, the very four?
Yeah. I don't like that rock, it seemed like it turned loose. If that's what you used on that entrance.
But see, with, the receipts are in there, I know we use a lot of it, so it's probably, it needs to be measured.
We're gonna, we're gonna give it on a solid value, we're gonna use, well, P gravel, we got that down there, we don't have a whole lot, but you, but we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead and get that used up.
And that pile out there is not, P gravel's number four.
The pile, the one in third yard, three five.
I wish it was number five.
It's a smaller pile.
Okay.
The one's down there, hundred yard, three five.
You have your own pile? You're talking about that big pile there?
Yes.
Oh, you're talking about his is the smaller?
No, her, her off, this, that was smaller than yours.
Okay, yeah, all that, and that's grade five? Okay.
Both of them, y'all got a doggo.
That was y'all's before the union system.
And then I've got a P gravel out there. Was that the black snow there that they hauled in there years ago?
That manmade or volcanic? Just didn't stick.
Well, is that what they used that in the school, now that's forty, you know, that's a hole? Well, that's definitely a big hole, like you wouldn't have lived. John, John says he likes P gravel because it, it gets, that smaller gravel gets down, it'll, it'll crack and will shake that.
Yeah, it's coated good, I like P gravel. I've got them on those lists that we, is bid out, how much it is. We cooked bids on it last year, so I've got it in my desk, how much it was a yard delivered. Yeah, one seal, that's what I wanna do, yeah. Okay. We need to use that, what we got up down at the maintenance facility there right there by his barn, use that up first and then if we need to buy anymore, I'm, I'm providing P gravel, I like it. Real well. Takes a little less oil too. Yes, I have my tailgate. Fixed pretty tight. Well, I think Al's a pretty high priority, cause there's, he's got a lot of roads tore up. And I think Applewhite's got several roads that were tore up from even last summer on, you know, those, and that. The one y'all already put oil on, so we need to probably start from one and then maybe go to three. And then, I know you've got one tore up now, y'all tore one, y'all fixed two. Okay, and then, then go your way, kinda then work back to my way. Because uh I think, I've got one road tore up and I'm, it should hold up good in the summer to drive on, the one that I've got, it's a mess.
I'm, I'm not seeing it cause as much issue, but I'm gonna use some P two emotions.
Mm-hmm, and be ready. Okay.
And that'll get me another year or two out of it, cause I get some money built back up.
Okay, yeah.
But that's, that's my plan right now, if you use some P two emotion, uh, impulsion, uh, I wake up.
Okay.
To uh, uh, put that on land, because the prices that I've got so far on here are way below what chips they're in.
But it could, it could better, if you do this here, cause it, it preps the road better. And he said you could come back later, you get at least thirty-five years more, yeah.
Thirty-five years or more, he looked at it, I, I drove him down probably thirty miles on my road. He said most of your roads, that, that would be what he would recommend to do, is to hit thin.
Take the season off, get it packed in, yeah.
Start and I talk with him, until it hits, I mean, they elevate it.
Yeah.
They after starting to creep. And so, that's what I'm gonna do with some land conditioner, to try to seal them off in here. He said the only thing that needs to be done is go in there and spray that stuff, cause it's like a nutrient.
And we'll wing it for you, and then I got several, I'll have them ready to roll. Yeah, the millings need be took care of.
They said that this uh guy, he said, he just, once you got the back on there, the still, the, the base two inches, you gotta be back for other stuff. And you could just roll it.
Pack and water it in, yeah.
And it'll be, cause like I said, there's, we got three or four roads, if they just dump that on there. And that's all, it's in the side ditch now, it's gonna be, they moved it down the side. But like I said, to do that is not, that's like to get it fair.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I see that.
Because he said it, it works together, it bonds it back.
Many of my roads has changed after the guy from Tech Drive comes over, it's about the same, we use on the, the matching button then. Because I was planning on doing that though, and that's a four mile stretch of road. And I was gonna go in and see if I could do it, cause I thought I could use that with it. But once I found that out, oh, I've got some spots in there that I've gotta fix, but I'm not gonna see it going in now, I'm gonna go back and.
So, if we, if we start in one, I'll get with Justin, where you think, as it gets closer, where you think we may stop at when we get done with? where you think we may stop at when we get done with, where you're at, what side of the precinct you're at? If you're closer to three, we'll do something over there and head on around. If it's closer to my way, then I could cut on through my precinct, end up in your precinct. Just save us a, maybe a bunch of moving. Well, that, that gravel machine has to be hauled, you can't drive it. And packers some, one packer's ahead of the other one, so it's organization.
Right now, I got, you know, we're gonna get, trying to get, get these, all this, uh, milling zone, you can't just go and open it up, it's worth saying, it's gonna wash it. So it's gonna make, like I said, one road is a few soft spots, you can chip silly in, but in the, that's one, thirty-two, sixty-five. Well, they fill it down the border, but I come in, it could, you know, a few spots, you just seal coat it and be really good.
I got, we got the road, uh, forty-five fifty out here, right by the road. That I would have did before the union system come in, it really shouldn't have been sealed for the last year. But it wasn't done, and that's in my old street road, and I'm definitely gonna do that, get it sealed off. I've done, already replaced it over, it is, and.
On my end, I'm gonna wait till I get that bridge put in, so I don't have to repair a whole bunch of extra. And then I will seal coat to them, you know? And then my road that's tore up is, got a lot of that flyish rock, some kinda, maybe it's limestone or something in it, and, uh, so, uh, I'm not gonna use that emulsion we talked about, I'm gonna spray it with that SB two or whatever, what was it you used the other day on that, those millings? The one, number one? Probably put that on, let it cure out a little bit, and then we'll spray chips silly. It's kind of the process of all those haul roads is done. Yeah, yeah, and.
Same versus new, different. Look, and actually, that old truck, and we thought we suggested that, there is the, the teacher, the guy, who's, uh, who knows how to spray it, oh. Right now, I only have noticed, uh, where I was in the rain. And that's it, you know? Can that like, you get to the right rate, how much oil we want down?
Drove too fast. You gonna pull the old truck with your new international dump truck, the automatic? What's so bad that it looks so much like we're gonna get them mixed up? I want the cleanest one when it's all wet.
We gonna keep that truck, we need to keep it clean.
Keep it cleaned out?
Yeah, cause they was, uh, somehow they were, you know, you have to, after, bleach is, uh, cut out, with oil, and it just got, that thing, that, cool. You couldn't get it cooled. You have to, you kind of, basically could, and just, but you know, it just needs to be.
Well, my, my truck, I like, you can use both, you can use two, uh, only one here.
It's coated.
All in the sea, all in the water.
Is there, I heard somebody told me you could buy some chemical to spray that tank with, that spray trailer, and it would keep stuff from sticking to it so bad, and every day when you're done, you clean it off easier. Uh-huh, so it'd be nasty, yeah, it's kinda dold anyway. So I don't know if it'd work over, it already got oil all over it or not, I didn't know, yeah, maybe. Okay, so we need to take a few lessons on that freight truck, freight trailer, when y'all are working, and know what we're setting it at, yeah. Be multitasking, multi-trained. Yeah, and there's times you might wanna just go out with that whole setup in October and spray over a covert. You might wanna spray twenty feet.
Summertime? Well, it is, uh, all, everybody needs to have an idea of when, you know, what, what they're gonna do, and when, when they got in their mind that they would like, would have, they're ready to do, and then come back to you, or you come to us, when, if you've got your land out, give us a week, a week and a half, to say, okay, we're going to them the sixth of May, we'll use that, since we're starting that, that day, we'll use that as an example. We're going to precinct one, six, the sixth of May, until we get done with what they're, they've got taken care of. So we, we may be out there a week, we may be out there two weeks, whatever they can do, and do that, and then we'll move. That'll wait, we don't have to move here, and then move back out there, and back over there, you know? We get one done, and then move to the next one, and do y'all have a problem with that?
That sounds good. I've got my list, I'll leave my map together, I'm gonna get a map like that, that chamber of commerce, I know, trace off my route. Our tech council, Gobics, has a new map, we all got one, it's on the closer side.
No, they, 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 they're not finished with it, we got the new one, but it's not right.
I take it back.
Okay.
I had to take it back, I've been in the.
Well, I had it called last week, and I've always worked on it.
Uh, they all working on it, but. These map right here, let me see that one, this one. This is, it's just the precinct, this is Davis precinct, uh, yeah, that was, this one, mine, isn't it?
This is too little there.
Uh, but anyway, the, the fire department done these for me, it, the, they could be four of them, it'll take part of all of them, but yours is the main one on there. I've got mine laminated, I've got one that size right there laminated, and I've got it to where, if we're out at night, you pick that up and you read it. You take that right there, you ain't gonna read that circuit at night going down the road trying to figure out where you're gonna go.
Except right there, run together, pull that map there, he's got it.
It's so small, this one here, uh, Larry blew them up for me, for mine. That one, there's mostly precinct three, the green is precinct three, the blue is one, purple's, uh, two, and, uh, no, purple's, it's four, is ours. And the green is precinct, uh, three, the red is precinct one, and the blue is precinct, precinct two. But he can blow each individual one up, where you can see what you've got. And he taught me he didn't mind doing it for anybody, if they just let him. McRae, Fox Station.
We called, they called us Friday, no, Thursday, all day long, you know, Texas government, or whatever.
Yeah, our tech council.
They have thirty inch road that.
You know, we, I think, called me, I said, cemetery road, and he said, well, we've built it up, that thirty-three twenty-one is.
Thirty-one fifty-one.
Yeah, thirty-one fifty-one is a, it says cemetery road, I said, look, you had to call Jimmy, I, I don't know what that is over there, I said, is it cemetery road or what, you know?
He called me, and he said, said, well, that's, that's, uh, he said, I, I got them driving side of it, and he said, the mailbox shows cemetery road. I said, I don't care, it's listed as a county road, I said, well, I want it, it's thirty-one fifty-one.
And then they give me five roads that are six, and we got, just found one in Jim's. I said, these roads don't exist.
Some, one of mine that he give me didn't exist, but. Like I say, if y'all can give us a, a week, a week and a half, you know, week and a half would be good, that way if we've got something we're trying to get finished, we can finish it and move, be ready to move then when y'all are ready. And if y'all take, gonna take care of getting the, the equipment all out there, then we do the same when it comes to it. And if y'all take, gonna take care of getting the, the equipment all out there, then we do the same when it comes to it.
Are you ready to, if anybody gets a correction, like you're gonna do this year?
No. No, not so. Well.
No, I, I mean, I believe that we'll do, we'll do these, my plan is we'll do these, and when we get done, we're gonna see, you know, we gotta figure, you know, we gotta ballpark there on money, and then we gotta see what we're gonna have left, and see how much more we can prep, and get ready.
How long does it take to do it?
About ten miles?
I don't know, maybe there's a lot of practice.
I think it's two weeks. To do that two miles, what do you think, maybe two days?
Two, three days.
If nothing, if nothing goes wrong.
And that's where you got to throw a bit, ready, all you got is guns, took them down, shoot that off, and took them down.
Yes, yeah.
The stuff, you know, crushing.
You, you can, and this is mine, the way I have seen, or from what I've seen of it, you can do a mile to a mile and a half a day. Am I wrong? If you've got the gravel all there, and the, yeah, and the oil there.
And Jimmy, you're looking at Mount Seal Coating this year, you're talking that you've ridden thirty miles of road with somebody that brought up that.
It's, it's a deal we found at school, at school this year, Mount Vernon, Franklin County uses it a lot. Uh, they've done a lot of miles of their roads with it, uh, and it, it, it's not a seal coat per se, but it will preserve that road, if you've got cracks in that road, and all, and you can drive on it in forty-five minutes. If, if you go in there, it turns the road black, just like the, our old asphalt road, and it will seal up the cracks and all in it, and you can get another two to, to five years out of it with, uh, by putting it on there, and not having the seal coat damage. Huh, P, P2 emulsion?
The guy wants to come, it's a practical formula of emulsion, it goes down into the road about.
He said in forty-five minutes, you pour it on the water, and it's gonna, you're not gonna, the water's not gonna penetrate it. But then, the year, the next year, you can come back and seal coat that road, it's already repaired, and you could, you know, you can get that done.
Martin's a road that's a lot of problems. We got roads, all we're gonna make good, though, before you break the seal coat, and spray this crack.
I've, I've got some roads that, that we're, we can't do that on yet.
You want that to turn it up?
A few soft spots, maybe.
He's gonna seal seal coat.
Daniel, what were you describing? Ship, it wasn't seal coat, you said you're gonna put some sort of something.
Just like the P2 emulsion, I'm gonna, I think, a couple of my roads, I can still more seal coat some roads, but then I'm gonna put that, that, where we put that milling's at, they, well, they're in here.
Road milling, all the, all the.
The re-clot, the re-clot. I've got three or four roads, they come in there and just dumped it, thought they didn't get to it, and it was, they didn't get to it, and it just rippled the roads up, and I'm just gonna windrow it back in the road, mix it up, and put that emulsion in it.
Dry blood.
Yes. So there'll be a little hole, that, that emulsion, it'll take that wrap and it'll energize it, and it'll hold back my gas off.
And you said you're playing this stuff, you use it over a frame?
It has, they are gonna use frame, that's all they use, frame.
They bought, bought two transport trailers, they had one, and they've just bought another, that, uh, they're hauling their own.
But you can't get it in, uh, totes.
Totes, yeah, if you've got a small note that you, uh, can do, you can go down there with a, with a trailer. That's another reason I'm looking at this, this truck, uh, getting another trailer, is you can go to your yard and pick it up these, these plastic totes that you see, and mix it yourself.
Like your tree's so, so much?
Well, it's not that, no, it's, it's the, the. You know what, Rand Knott sells out there at the, in his yard, those, those type totes, you go down there and get it, and, and use that to, to, uh, uh, to haul it with you. Or they, they will.
He's gonna, he said, he's not gonna, he's gonna be here the first time, he gonna make sure you do it the right way.
And, and he will come up and, and tell you how, how many, I mean, how much it's gonna cost you to do a section of road. He's got a deal that he plugged in the cigarette lighter, and, uh, goes down the road, and it told him exactly how many feet that, that it was, the feet of the, uh, it got the feet of, you know, the width of the road, and he told him, it, it told him, you know, what, and he sat down and figured then what it was gonna cost to do that section of road that you wanted to do.
Said it's putting, it's not even a sticker, and it'll tell you how, what to do and everything. How much, how many miles you gonna have to do it, it just figures a ratio for you. He's gonna. It's that thing about.
Have you got the link?
What you have, you're gonna do, you know, you got chips silly there, or you can do this here. You know, you can, you had to do.
You're a big one.
But he's got the, uh, he got some dollars on a couple of those. And, uh, he give us a quote, I, I didn't got, I didn't quote, I didn't.
I've got, I didn't take the break, man, I thought I, I had it.
Well, like I said, if that works, that's all they do, it's right to count, that's all the load. There are two of them, there are two of guys, three of the guys that are doing it, right to do it.
Same does, and the two new guys that have came in are usually. They would, I talked to them for an hour down at school this year, and.
If they would do.
That's what really sold me, uh, on talking to them about it, getting them to come up here and.
They bought their own trailer, you know, they bought their own trailer, you know, you're messing up, so it's gotta be.
Well, this, this company helped Franklin County, and they found another transport trailer for them, an oil trailer, for five thousand dollars.
But like I said, it's gonna, that's gonna be a problem, just the old trucks they've got. We gonna have enough of? No, we can't schedule this, cause they, they gonna have everything there.
Yeah. So.
Can't visit, we're, 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 yes, yes.
Because it could be exactly two miles to where he starts, every, his precinct. Well, yeah, I mean, you never told him Bobby gonna get saved, or, you know, anything, that's the office or something. Y'all haven't got anything else, we kinda know where we're going, Joe.
Hold on, we got, hold on, we got something. Cause they were playing getting work, somebody goes Terry, somebody goes Jeff, Jeff don't know about it, so that's one of them, we're just taking care of them.
Another thing too with this, this, uh, that I just thought about, that makes sense, with our, our full equipment, we need to make sure when somebody uses it, that it's full of fuel, and set it back in the yard. You know, when you get through with it, get it back to the yard, get, make sure that the truck and the piece of equipment is full of fuel. We've got a log book up there for the trucks, the big trucks, just, just, yeah, just for hauling equipment. Period, just with, we're hauling period, we're saying, period. Okay, I, that's gonna make it.